Evening everyone.
How are you, Michael?
Hey Liz, thanks for the call today.
No problem.
Yeah, my neighbor, he asked, how come you, you know, he asked the question. I said, you know, I don't know, so I'll just ask her.
Do we have all of council with us?
We have a couple more coming here.
Evening everybody.
Hi Mayor, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Good. Did your first communion?
It's tomorrow, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Apparently it's the, now it's the first Tuesday in May, not the first Saturday in May.
That Tuesday.
Still waiting on Bridget?
Yeah, oh, here she is. Bridget, don't do that to me. You make me all nervous when you're not coming.
Let's check our time.
We have quite a load tonight, Marie.
I know, I was scared.
All right, well we have everyone with us. We'll start our caucus. Is everyone good with the minutes of April 19th?
Yes.
We'll get a chance to check them out?
Yep.
Thanks for putting them together, Liz.
No problem.
Everyone good with their committee reports?
Yes.
Right, before we start the legislative agenda this evening, I'm going to entertain a motion to move ordinance 2129 to legislation for second reading, and ordinance 2128 to legislation for passage without three readings. All ready?
Yep.
Which ones were those?
Ordinance 2129, the second read, and ordinance 2128, the passage without three readings.
The 29 is the traffic signs?
Yes.
Okay, what's the other one?
The signals, or the, the...
Eight minute markings.
Markings, right.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, Bill, you're set with your legislation for first reading?
Yes.
Sarah, you have an ordinance for first read? You with me, Sarah?
Sorry, yes, I have that. I was on mute.
Hey Bridget, you have?
Seven.
Seven, yes. All right, second read. Bill, you have?
Yes.
And Sarah, you have one as well. Let me just, we're going to move. Okay, legislation without three reads. Bridget, you have one that we're moving?
I still have, I have one on second read still. 2129.
Yeah, we just flipped them. 2920 flipped.
Exactly.
Okay.
You good with that? See that? Okay. All right, for third, third read and final passage. Bill, you have? The...
Right.
For the restroom?
Yes.
Hey Bridget, you have the... The... Public Safety Council rant. You have the... Selling the obsolete vehicles.
Yes.
So we're all set on legislation. Okay, anything for roundtable? Brian?
A quick question, probably from Mary Kay. I had a resident reach out. They wanted to know if they ever wanted to get a tree for their, their tree lawn. Did they have to go through like the city for that? Would the city put it in, or is there a cost they could, you know, pay the city for, or how do we, how do we do those?
That's an excellent question, and we have a wonderful adapted tree program, which we would be happy to discuss with them. If they give us a call here at City Hall, they can ask for me, and I'll make sure we get them the information that they need. But it is, it is at the residence cost, but we do get the tree, deliver the tree, plant the tree, and for the life of the tree, you know, we're pruning and doing the maintenance. If it's a problem within the year, we also replace it. So it's a great program. Thanks for asking about it.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, Brian, I'll say that the city picked up a thundercloud plum and planted it for me last September, and I mean, they did an excellent job.
Oh wow, okay, cool. All right, yeah, I'll let them know. Thanks. That's it.
There you go.
Mike, I'll give a Board of Zoning and Building Appeal's agenda on my second time around.
Okay, thank you.
Maria?
No, I'll sit, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Okay, I got a couple things. The first thing that I have a question on is ordinance 2121, which is on Bain Park restroom. Did that need to get referred to planning and design? And if so, do we need to wait for their recommendation to pass it?
It was already referred to them.
And they heard it already?
Yes.
I believe the Recreation Commission has reviewed it.
I'm sorry, I was thinking of...
Right, and so we do need the matter to be referred to planning.
We don't know the... You know, we have specifications, but we don't know the final color scheme and, and what the items in particular will be. Once we have those in the final plans, then it will be preferred to plan in, just plan in and design.
As a mandatory referral, thank you, Mayor.
Correct.
Is that permitted? Are we allowed to pass it before we get their referral? I feel like when we did Thomas Lane, we had to have both mandatory referrals and recommendations before we could pass it. And I guess I can pull back the charter, or Tim, if you have the charter right there.
If I may just add, the legislation's authorizing us to go to RFP for the contractor who will, will provide those items that the mayor described that the Planning Commission needs. And so it's a portion of the project. We would still wait until after that approval before we would bid for a contractor to install those materials. So at this point, we are not asking for permission to install the facility, but rather to create a request for proposals so that we can secure a company that will provide us with that, those details and those costs.
So then we would get there, we would get this, the mandatory referral would be sent to planning and design with the specs developed from this. We'd get a second piece of legislation for essentially the build, and that's where their recommendation would come in?
I believe we would...
Yeah, yeah, before we go to the RFP, they will have reviewed it.
Second piece of legislation will be, will be bringing the bids before the Board of Control.
Correct.
So are we comfortable with passing it this evening?
Yeah, it's a repeal and replace too, right? We already passed it once.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want to make the same mistake twice if we got there. And I guess I didn't have, I was just thinking about it about five minutes ago, so I didn't have time to look up the charter.
Yeah. I think the problem we have to look at, there's really nothing to give to planning and design at this point, correct, Mayor? Am I correct on that? We don't have anything for them to approve.
We don't have the final specifications for the, you know, for the... The restroom. You know, we don't know what type of the materials are, they're gonna be, you know, what Mary Kay has shared with everybody is, you know, just... You know, it's a composite of, you know, other, of other installs. So until we have all those, you know, until we know what the materials are gonna be, you know, we have talked about trying to match the, the brick to the stonework at Bain Cap and Bain Pavilion, I'm sorry. So, you know, again, until we have all those specifications, planning and design can make its final recommendation. Or make its recommendation, I should say.
Okay, I defer to council and to the administration if we think that we are not violating our charter in this. I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of it.
Yes, Sarah, I mean, it's, we're not going ahead and authorizing the mayor to, to, to...
Build or anything.
Build or, yeah, you know, get bids and bring them back to the Board of Control yet, so.
Okay, okay, thank you for helping me to understand where we're at on that.
Thank you for, thank you for asking, walking us, everyone walking it through.
Okay. The second one's actually really easy. I have one other thing. Mike, tonight, can you add chapter 704 Domestic Abuse Protections to my committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
Does everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And that was all I had.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Bridget?
Thank you. I have a question for you, Mary Kay. I received, I was talking to someone who lives on Brook Park, and they March 1st received a little notice that, from First Energy, that their trees were gonna be trimmed at no cost to them. But they actually took the tree down, and they drove over their grass to get the stump out and everything. And she was very angry. Is this something that, that First Energy would have to deal with? Is this something that we could help her with?
So, that is unusual. Usually they would let us know about a tree removal.
But they spoke to them, they said the city of Cleveland wanted all these trees down.
So, on Brook Park Road, there was a series of three tree lawn trees between Brook Park and the, in the bridge. It's a Dominion gas line project. It's not part of the Illuminating Company trimming. They were removed because the gas line construction would have killed them, and they were end of life. They were very... I reviewed this with Stack. They were, they were scheduled for removal by the city, and so having Dominion remove them for us was, you know, lifting some of the responsibility off of us. But that's for a Dominion gas project that probably will start this summer. We haven't had our pre-con, our pre-construction meeting yet, so I can't tell you the exact start date. But they did ask for permission. Our arborist had recommended in our management, tree management report to have them removed. Our on-staff city arborist also concurred that they were on his list for removal, so... They were removed. I am sorry that there wasn't more advanced notice. Dominion did tell me that they would notify the residents about the removal before it was done. So, I don't know where the disconnect on that.
Yeah, they thought they were just gonna get them trimmed, so they were very surprised that it was gone.
Yeah, there were three trees in the park, so this would, if they live in this one section between...
Yeah, that's where they live, yeah.
In the bridge, yeah. It, it wouldn't have been the trimming. That would be an Illuminating Company matter. And maybe it's confusing because maybe they got a notification about some other trimming and this Dominion project, because both they, there are going on in our community.
Okay, okay.
If you, if you could forward me their phone number, I can go into some detail.
Sure, that'd be awesome.
If you would like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And, and the address too, I think that might be helpful if it...
Yeah.
It's probably what Mary Kay said is probably the same location, but just to be sure.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all tonight.
Craig?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Liz, do you have anything?
So, there are 14 days left to file your financial disclosure statement. If you haven't filed it yet, May 17th is when it's due. Also, I'm looking to contact the Attorney General's Office again, with Attorney General and the Auditor of State, to find out when they are offering the public records training, or public meetings in Sunshine Law and Public Records Act training. Because it is required by everyone to have completed that during your term, so that has to be done in the four years that you guys are on. So I will look into that and give some dates. I know that they offer the online training all the time, and it is, I forget how many hours, I want to say it's like 10 hours, but you can start and stop, since it does keep track of that. So I will, when I get more information for both of those, I'll send it out to everybody.
Thank you.
Yep.
Much for both those reminders. Okay, we will begin the regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
Okay, everybody, it's seven o'clock. Meeting of the Council of City Fairview Park for Monday, May 3rd, 2021 is now called to order. At the moment of silent reflection. Number three, please call roll.
You're on mute, Liz.
Mr. Semerly.
Here.
Mr. Minnick.
Here.
Mrs. Adler.
Here.
Mr. Kilbane.
Here.
Mrs. Waring.
Here.
Mrs. King.
Here.
Mr. Berger.
President.
Hey, Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of council for April 19th, 2021.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number three, please call roll a passage of the minutes.
Mr. Semerly.
Here.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Approved. We now have this evening's committee reports, beginning with the Environment, Public Works Planning and Zoning and Development, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you, Council President. The Environment, Public Works Planning, Zoning, Development Committee met on Monday, April 26th, 2021 at 7:02 PM via Zoom to discuss two ordinances. Members of council, Mayor Cooney and Public Service Development Director Costello participated in the discussion. Ordinance 2121, repeal and replace plans and specifications for Bain Park restroom. Ordinance 2048 was repealed as the funding for the city engineer was changed from the Recreation Fund, Fund 260, to the Permanent Improvement Fund. On Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, the Bain Park restroom project was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission members. The commission voted unanimously in favor of providing a recommendation on behalf of the proposed project. Director Costello stated there were some concerns pertaining to the new location, and after discussion and the possibility of additional expense of $40,000, the concerns were resolved. The present restroom will be maintained as a storage facility. The proposed restroom will have some new amenities. Motion to place ordinance 2121, a third reading and upper passage was approved, 7-0. Ordinance 2127, authorizing engineering and consulting for Cold Creek Assessment. This legislation authorizes McCain Engineering and Surveying to use consultants to access five areas of Cold Creek between the culvert and cabin for erosion in Bain Park. Director Costello stated the costs are not to exceed $18,790 from the SUR fund, 510. The use of the SUR fund is because Cold Creek collects storm water from neighborhoods throughout the city, as well as communities adjacent to our city that travels to Rocky River. A question was asked if the consultants during their assessment discovered additional work is necessary. Mayor Cooney responded and stated legislation would be presented to city council. Motion to place ordinance 2127, a second reading, and subsequent third reading was approved, 7-0. This completes my report.
I have the local government and community services committee report, Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. Local government and community services met on Monday, April 26th via teleconference, beginning at 7:27 PM. Present were members of council and the mayor. The committee discussed one piece of legislation, ordinance 1950, enacting Chapter 704 protections for domestic violence victims and affected landlords. According to council rules, ordinances that have not been acted upon within a period of one year shall be reassigned to committee by the council president. This ordinance was last acted upon by council in November of 2019. A motion to remove this ordinance from committee with the understanding that it will be introduced to committee under the new council passed 7 to 0. Local government and community services ended at 7:32 PM. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The finance committee, Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. The finance committee met via video conference on Monday, April 12th, 2021, I'm sorry, April 26th, 2021 at 7:32 PM. In attendance were members of council, Mayor Cooney, Director Costello, Director Single, and members of the community. Ordinance 2128, authorizing expenditures for pavement marking services. Director Costello explained that this is an annual request. Questions were asked if a more reflective paint could be used because the lines can be hard to see, especially in the rain. Director Costello explained that a higher reflective product is only available in thermoplastic materials, which is not recommended for older pavement due to its higher cost. As the city completes paving projects, the thermoplastic markings will be considered. The repavement project of West 210 this summer will include thermoplastic markings. A motion was made to have this ordinance up for second read and emergency passage, and that passed with a vote of 7 to 0. Ordinance 2129, authorizing purchase of parts and materials for traffic and pedestrian signals. Director Costello explained that the city's traffic technician needs to have replacement parts on the shelf so immediate fixes can be made. The amount of $20,000 is for the whole year, since items recorded from February totaled $10,500. A motion was made to have this ordinance on second and subsequent third read, and that passed with a vote of 7 to 0. The finance committee concluded at 7:47 PM, and this concludes my report.
At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to amend the agenda. To move ordinance 2129 to legislation for second reading, and ordinance 2128 to legislation for passage without three readings.
So moved.
Second.
Roll on the motion to amend the agenda.
Mr. Semerly.
Yeah.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Here is the agenda is amended. We will now begin our legislative agenda for this evening, legislation for first reading, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you, Council President. I have two ordinances for first read.
Number three, please assign numbers and read the titles.
Ordinance 2131, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilman Minnick, co-sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing McKay Engineering and Surveying Company, the city engineer, to prepare plans and specifications and provide construction administration, inspection, and bidding services for the installment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2132, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilman Minnick, co-sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development to advertise for bids, and the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, as determined by the Board of Control, to install new sidewalks, curbs, and curb ramps in the southeast section of the city and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance is 2131, 2132, a full place of first reading and assigned to the Environment, Public Works, and Zoning. Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to place an ordinance up for first reading.
Number three, please assign a number and read the title.
Ordinance 2133, requested by the Finance Department, sponsored by Councilwoman Waring. An ordinance amending section 929.06 of chapter 929 entitled "Solid Waste Collection Charges" of the codified ordinances of the city of Fairview Park and declaring an emergency.
The ordinance 2133 is placed at first reading and assigned to the local government and community services committee. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place seven ordinances up for first reading tonight.
Number three, please assign numbers and read the titles.
Ordinance 2134, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King, co-sponsored by Councilman Minnick. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administration to accept awarded 2021 Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Grant Program funds from Cuyahoga County, and file all documents and execute all agreements necessary to receive said funds and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2135, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King, co-sponsored by Councilman Minnick. An ordinance supporting and authorizing the submission of a 2021 application to the Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, NOAAAC, for the congestion mitigation and air quality program to provide financial assistance for the Lorraine Road congestion mitigation and air quality project, and authorizing the mayor to accept any awarded grant funds and file all documents and execute all agreements necessary to receive any awarded grant funds and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2136, request Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance supporting and authorizing the submission of an application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for round 27 of the Nature Works Grant Program to provide financial assistance for the replacement of the playground at Bain Park, and authorizing the mayor to accept any awarded grant funds and file all documents and execute all agreements necessary to receive and administer any awarded grant funds and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2137, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King, co-sponsored by Councilman Minnick. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development to advertise for bids, and the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, as determined by the Board of Control, for the installation of a connector pathway at Balkan Park and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2138, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance, oh shoot, an ordinance authorizing, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development to advertise for bids, and the mayor to enter into a contract, I'm sorry, I'm reading the same one. 2138, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development and the Director of Finance to sell obsolete vehicles from the city's police fleet through the Greater Cleveland Auto Auction and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2139, requested by the Finance Department, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance levying special assessments for collection of the monthly charge for collection of solid waste in the city of Fairview Park, Ohio, for the tax year 2022 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2140, originated by the Finance Department, requested by Mayor Patrick Cooney, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance levying special assessments for the improvement of all of the streets of Fairview Park, Ohio, providing and supplying said streets with electric street lighting for the tax years 2022 and 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. The ordinance is 2134, 2135, 2136, 2137, 2138, 2139, and 2140 are all placed on first reading and assigned to the finance committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have legislation for second reading, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you, Council President. I move the place ordinance 2127 at second reading.
Ordinance 2127, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilman Minnick, co-sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development to engage McKay Engineering and their respective consulting experts to assess erosion in Cold Creek and Bain Park.
Thank you. Ordinance 2127 is placed on second and subsequent third reading. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place ordinance 2129 up for second reading.
Here with the clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 2129, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King, co-sponsored by Councilman Minnick. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development to purchase traffic signal parts and materials for various traffic and pedestrian signals in the city of Fairview Park and declaring an emergency.
The ordinance 2129 is placed on second and subsequent third reading. It is now time for audience input on legislation that is up for passage. There, Westbrook, have we received any requests to comment or question legislation of the passage this evening?
No.
Okay, thank you. We will now have legislation for passage without three readings, Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place ordinance 2128 up for emergency passage.
Thank you. Number three, please read the title.
Ordinance 2128, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development to purchase pavement marking services and declaring an emergency.
They are called for passage of, I'm sorry, Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to make a motion to suspend the charter provision in Rule 49 requiring three reads.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing number three, please call, roll on the motion.
Mr. Semerly.
Yeah.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Here is, prior to call for passage of ordinance 2128, is there any further discussion? Hearing number three, please call roll on passage of ordinance 2128.
Mr. Semerly.
Yeah.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
2128 passes. We will now legislation, the third and final passage, Councilman Minnick.
Thank you, Council President. I move the place ordinance 2121 at third reading and up for final passage.
Okay, with the clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 2121, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilman Minnick, co-sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance repailing and replacing ordinance 2048 and authorizing McKay Engineering and Surveying Company to prepare plans and specifications and provide construction administration and procurement services. and provide construction administration and procurement services for the relocation and reconstruction of a restroom at Bain Park and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty-one twenty-one, is there any discussion? Hearing number clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance twenty-one twenty-one.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yep.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Twenty-one twenty-one pass. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place ordinance twenty-one twenty-four up for third read and final passage.
Thank you. Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance twenty-one twenty-four, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance, ordinance accepting the twenty-two-one Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council Energize Community Grant to provide financial assistance for energy efficiency projects or energy infrastructure improvements and authorizing the city administration to file all documents and execute all agreements necessary to receive any awarded grant funds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Prior to call for roll, the passage of ordinance twenty-one twenty-four, is there any discussion? Hearing number clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance twenty-one twenty-four.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
And it's twenty-four passes. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place ordinance twenty-one twenty-five up for third read and final passage tonight.
May the clerk please read the title.
Ordinance twenty-one twenty-five, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing city directors to participate in various cooperative purchasing programs and declaring an emergency.
Okay, prior to call for passage of ordinance twenty-one twenty-five, is there any discussion? Hearing number clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance twenty-one twenty-five.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Twenty-one twenty-five passes. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to place ordinance twenty-one twenty-six up for third read and final passage tonight.
Okay, may the clerk please read the title.
Ordinance twenty-one twenty-six, requested by Mary Kay Costello, Director of Public Service and Development, sponsored by Councilwoman King. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Development and the Director of Finance to sell obsolete vehicles from the city fleets through the Greater Cleveland Auto Auction and declaring an emergency.
Call for passage of ordinance twenty-one twenty-six, is there any discussion? Hearing number clerk, please call roll on passage of ordinance twenty-one twenty-six.
Mr. Semerly.
Yes.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane.
Yes.
Mrs. Waring.
Yes.
Mrs. King.
Yes.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one twenty-six passes. That will conclude our legislative agenda for this evening. We will not have reports of communications from the mayor and his directors. Mayor Cooney, if you're ready.
Thank you, Council President Kilbane. Good evening, everybody. Now that the weather is getting a little nicer, we're having some outdoor events at our senior center. Starting a week from tomorrow, there'll be a new walking group at Nelson Russ Park. And meet up there at ten-thirty and join one of our newer parks here in the city. I recommend people call Kathy at the Senior Center at four-four-zero-three-five-six-four-four-three-seven to sign up for that event. Another outdoor event is gonna, we're gonna have trivia, an outdoor trivia event on Friday, May twenty-first at one P M. Again, please reach out to the Senior Center if that's something you're interested in doing. And our first outdoor event of the year was held on Friday, April twenty-third. It was a day later than scheduled, but it worked out very well due to the fact that we had a lot of snow earlier in the week and gave us, gave the parking lot a little time to clear off. But Jeff Varga put on a fabulous concert for our seniors and some of us here at City Hall. Jeff played for us last fall at the Bain Park gazebo and he did a great job. We had, I think, probably close to a hundred people there and everyone really enjoyed being out, having an opportunity to, to meet and talk and it was, it was just really a nice, very nice event. I'd like to thank Devoted Health Plans for their gift bags that they provided to, to our seniors. Also to O'Neil Healthcare for the box, box lunch. And then finally, the Cleveland Federation of Musicians Local Four. They paid for Jeff's services and we appreciate all of their efforts and putting on a great event. I'd like to thank Laura, Kathy, and Sandy at the Senior Center and then all of the gentlemen from the Service Department and getting the parking lot ready as well as Jack Costello and John Shuler from Senior Center for all their help as well. The Building Department is continuing to do property maintenance inspections. If somebody is contacted by the Building Department with a, with a list or an item to complete, if they have any questions, we'd encourage them to talk to the Building Department if they need any clarification on the, on the item at issue or a timeframe in which to complete the, the, the item. With the Recreation Department, I'd like to thank Eric Dennis from the Recreation Department and John Shuler, who works in the Senior Center for their efforts in helping a deer that was had a bucket on his snout for a long, his or her snout for a long time. There was a lot of effort to try to, to free that from, from this deer. Our Police Department was out a number of times. They, they tried to, to remove the bucket. I know the Ohio Division of Natural Resources spent a full day on a Saturday tracking the deer, trying to to take care of it and were unsuccessful. And I think the deer was just, quite frankly, exhausted and I, Eric and John did a very humane thing and went in there, removed it and then as far as we know, the deer is fine. So thank you, Eric. Thank you, John, for your good teamwork and compassion there. At the rec, rec department, Gemini Center Kids Club reopened today. If somebody's interested in using that, they're gonna have to make reservations beforehand. The plan is to reopen the showers a week from today. And summer camp and safety town registrations are now open. There have been some changes to the guidelines and protocols with respect to the operations at gyms and community centers. Rec Department and Director Kemp are reviewing those and and looking for the most safest option for people moving forward. We'd appreciate their patience as we work through these new changes. One of the items that has been brought to my attention relates to the hot tub at the, at the Gemini Center. Our aquatics director, Eric Dennis, has been meeting with other aquatic directors and there is still some concern about the use of hot tubs and the potentials, the spreading of COVID. Not every hot tub is created equally. Some are bigger, some are smaller. Some allow for easier social, social distancing than others. The recommendation and that Mr. Dennis has heard is that, you know, it's recommended that people who are not of, from the same family or same household wear masks in the, in the hot tub. I've talked to Director Kemp about this and because of the concerns based on the size of our, of our hot tub, you know, he feels in order to maintain the safety for our members and the users of the hot tub, that a reservation would be required. You know, a lot of people just coming in there. You know, if they're not part of this, you know, the same household. There was also consideration that there would be a mask mandate. And when you get into reservations, when you get into masking, when you get into social distancing, you're gonna have to have somebody who needs to enforce that. And our staffing at Gemini Center is, you know, because of COVID, you know, we're slowly building that up. We have, you know, lifeguards whose primary duty is to take care and make sure that people who are using the pool are safe. If they're dealing with complaints or requests with the hot tub, their, their attention will be diverted. And so that is so the, the primary reason why the hot tub has not been open. The Center for Disease Control and addressing this issue actually talks about it. And one of the things they talk about with respect to COVID is maintaining healthy operations. And specifically, they state with regard to lifeguards and water safety that you should ensure that lifeguards who are actively lifeguarding are not also expected to monitor social distancing, use of cloth masks, or hand washing of others. Assign these monitoring duties to staff that is not actively lifeguarding. So you know, we have staffing, our number one staffing concern with our lifeguards is that they take care of the pool. And I know Director Kemp, he, he has had advertising for lifeguard positions for months now and they're working on filling those positions. And as they do, this, this might be addressed, but you know, I know he has spoken to members who have had some concerns about this and I know that's been an issue that was brought to council's attention. I wanted to talk about it with you today. On Saturday, April twenty-fourth, the National Drug Takeback Day took place here at City Hall. We had, we received a hundred and one pounds of unused drugs over the counter and prescription drugs. I'd like to thank our auxiliary officers for their work that day and monitoring and taking in those items. They'll be back here on Saturday, May fifteenth, the auxiliaries from nine to twelve as we have our semi-annual shredding and household hazardous waste collection event. That was a big, it's always a big event and we'll be here again Saturday, May fifteenth from nine to twelve. We encourage people to, with respect to paper items, just bringing confidential information to have it shredded. And then for household hazardous waste, we have on our website those items that we accept. If people are unsure if something could be accepted, you know, give us a call, we'll, we'll let you know. I'd like to thank the Service Department for all their work in getting the large amount of brush and trees cleared from our tree lawns after that latest snowstorm. I know that all parts of the city were hit and they did, they've done a great job in, in attending to that. So I'd like to thank them for their efforts. On Friday, we had a Arbor Day contest ceremony. I'd like to thank the Shade Tree Advisory Committee for putting that together. And I'd also like to congratulate our winners from our three middle schools. Kaylee Crawford of Lewis Mayer Middle School, Ella McCarty of Messiah Lutheran, and Luke Wilkins of St. Angelo Marucci. They did a great job with their essays. We had a nice ceremony at Bain Cabin. I'd like to thank the Service Department for getting the trees ready to go on Arbor Day. And a special thanks to Linda Curz of the Stack for all her efforts in putting this contest together. It was a very nice event and hopefully something that we can do in the future. And the message there is if you can plant a tree, plant a tree. A lot of us don't have room to plant a tree, but if you have something in your yard, prune it, tend to it so it can stick around. So I have some good news with respect to the Mystic Road Connector Trail. The Metro Parks has received the funding for that trail. And it's going to be going forward. We don't have all the details at this time, but they received the funding from the state and we're very happy to hear that. I think that you know, that trail combined with the C, you know, CBGB award that we received for Eaton Road that council's gonna be considering with ordinances twenty-one thirty-one and twenty-one thirty-two are a great example of collaboration between the county and the metro parks in the city. You know, and when the, all of that's completed, we're gonna have a nice access for our residents and others to, to the metro park. So congratulations to the metro parks. Thank you to them for all their work and, and putting that together. And we look forward to working with them and the county and making this connection complete. I'm also very happy to announce that the Fairview Park Woodstock Stanford Regional Sewer Environmental Improvement Project, we're gonna have to come up with a smaller name for that, was recommended by Congressman Anthony Gonzalez. So that is just the very preliminary stage. It is still early in the process. Yeah, but we will provide additional details going forward. Director Costello earlier today spoke with a staff member from Senator Sher Brown's office about this project. We'll be supplying Senator Brown's office with some additional information to him just to help us with this legislative process. Yeah, I would like to thank Congressman Gonzalez and Senator Brown, both, and both of their staffs for all of their support that they have provided and you know, with respect to this project and other inquiries that we've made of, of them. And I know there'll be a lot of questions on this. We don't have a lot of answers. At this point in time, it's gonna be heard in committee. You know, you know, there's a lot of these projects, I think, nationwide. But it'll be heard in committee and then it'll have to pass on the floor. And we're not sure if it's gonna be tied with any type of Senate action or if there's some talk that the Senate will have its own here, programs in place. So, you know, that's why we'll reach out to Senator Brown. We'll reach out to Senator Portman's office to get some direction on what they anticipate the Senate will do, but also for their support. And I know that there were close to sixty projects that were submitted to the congressman and we are one of ten that were recommended. So we're moving in the right direction. Our project was the largest project that he recommended at four-point-seven million dollars. So this was a good sign. I know there's more work to be done. I know that council is supportive of this. We appreciate your support. And I know our residents in that area as well as throughout the city are always interested in sewer projects. These sewer projects, while they might be concentrated in one area, are beneficial to us, to us all. And I think that's one of the, the reasons it was recommended by the congressman. I know it'll have impact in Fairview Park, but also in Rocky River and with respect to Lake Erie. So thank you for your support. I'd like to thank community planner Jordan, Director Costello, and city engineer Kim Kerber for all their work on this. It was on the shelf, but they really went and grabbed it off the shelf and put it together very quickly. So we're happy to report that news and we'll keep you posted moving forward. And finally, tomorrow, there are two levy renewals on the ballot. And finally, tomorrow, there are two levy renewals on the ballot here in Fairview Park. I saw the order of what of elections personnel here busyly getting City Hall precinct ready for the Ward Three residents. And on the ballot is issue two, which is a fire levy renewal, which accounts for twelve percent of the fire department's budget. It's at the same rate since nineteen seventy-five. And issue three, which is street repair, it could tax renewal, which is our primary source for street repairs. And that will, is at the same rate since two thousand and five. Mr. President, that concludes my report today, thank you and have a good evening, everybody.
Aaron, other good news, especially on the two big projects. Okay, Director of Public Service and Development, Costello.
Thank you, I'd like to echo the mayor's sentiments regarding the Service Department's collection of debris from the last storm that we experienced. And they're doing a great job, they appreciate all the residents who are able to cut the limbs into sections for them and place them in a parallel fashion along the road. It makes it easier for them to get to the chipper. And our residents have been very patient as we have been through town a couple times. So still getting calls for new debris collection. So thanks to everyone's efforts for that. And thank you this evening for passage of the ordinances, especially the traffic painting and signals. We appreciate your, our work, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Director. My next director, single?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening to you and all members of council, just one item tonight. This week, I'll be working on the two thousand twenty-two tax budget. My intention is to have that completed by Monday and sent up to the council office to begin the legislative process. And that concludes my report, Steve, thanks.
Thank you. Lot, Director Riley?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. City Engineer Kerber?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to thank you for your consideration of the Co Creek Erosion Assessment Project. That project is extremely important to assess five areas that were identified as, as eroding along the, the bridges and the adjacent properties. And we have a subconsultant that has a lot of experience with this kind of work to provide recommendations for us for repairs, conceptual plans and, you know, cost estimates to go with those, those items. So we greatly appreciate your consideration. The West Two Tenth Project, we had a pre-construction meeting with Crossroads last week. They don't intend to start the project until about mid-June. They wanted to wait for the school year to finish to try to limit the amount of traffic on West Two Tenth Street. And we have the water project into see Cleveland Water for review and we are just waiting for any comments from them. And that concludes my report for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Engineer Kerber. Now's our public session, Kirk Westbrook, have we been contacted by any residents?
Yes, I have an email to read. It's from Rita, okay, it says, "Council, my name is Rita Soto and I live at two oh eight, six, seven Fair Park Drive. This concern has been ongoing for quite some time. Recently, some of the residents have all, have been all talking about the increased traffic and parked cars on our street. I mentioned them, mentioned to them that I would address the concerns to city council. One of my neighbors summed it up perfectly. Fair Park Drive is the driveway to the Service Department, police and city offices. The amount of vehicles and service trucks with equipment is a continual back and forth traffic pattern. We also have police cars to the mix. Our street is also a cut through to West two hundred and tenth Street. The speed of vehicles is well over twenty-five miles per hour. To add to this problem, we allow parking on one side of the street, but the sign to allow parking is posted at two oh eight, seventy, halfway down the street. There is an increase of parked cars day and night. They are never ticketed, constant delivery trucks and the worst are the landscapers. They park on either side and most don't use pylon, pylons. There are a few school buses that come for gas at the Service Department area as well. Traffic must yield to oncoming traffic. Our street has taken a beating with wear and tear due to the excessive amount of traffic. We have not had resurfacing for many years, all I can remember is a drizzle process. It is a nightmare trying to exit and enter your driveway. The cars speed down the hill from the rain road or speed down our street from West Two Ten to bypass the traffic light on the rain road. It has been a very long time since we have seen anyone ticketed for speeding. A few years back, I sent an email to retired police chief, Mr. Upperman, and he said that there has not been an accident report on Fair Park Drive to report. So to sum it up, it appears Fair Park Drive is in anything goes situation. What can we as residents do to solve the problem? Some of the residents have voiced solutions, but we want to hear from city council first.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Soto for that letter. Does anyone in the administration wish to speak to it?
I guess, Mr. President, if I may.
Right ahead.
Thank you. Well, first, unfortunately, with respect to the traffic from city vehicles, you know, that sometimes that's, you know, really their, their only way in, depending on where they're coming from. Secondly, with respect to the speeders, it's some, this is the first I've been brought to my attention. Obviously, I'll share it with Chief Shepherd and see what he, see what he feels is the best way to address it. Also, the issue, people parking on the wrong side of the street. We'll talk with the Service Department about maybe having some other signs installed. I know there's a bend there, so, you know, people may not be aware of it depending on where they're coming in. It's entering Fair Park. So these are, this is the first I'm hearing of this, I'm not sure if anybody else in my administration has. If they have, I will talk to them, see if there's been some efforts to address these concerns. And maybe an explanation as to why they haven't been addressed, but again, it's the first I'm hearing of it. I do have some good news for Mrs. Soto and her neighbors. City, the city of Cleveland will be working on a water line, a water main replacement there next year. And their street will be repaved, so, so I do have some good news for, for, it'll be next year. But we will, these other concerns, I will address them with their respective directors and report back to her and to, to council. And Kirk Westbrook, if you could forward that email to me, I believe it was an email.
I just sent it to you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll follow up with, with her and, and let council know where, where things stand.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Mrs. Soto for bringing this to our attention. Is there anything else, Kirk Westbrook?
Nope, that's all I had.
Thanks very much. Okay, we'll now have miscellaneous business and comments from council members, council members.
Thanks, Council President, just wanted to thank the Building Department real quick. They responded to a number of questions and inquiries for myself and a few residents last week. So just wanted to thank them for that and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Minnick?
Thank you, Council President. The Board of Zoning and Building Appeals will meet next Monday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-one, seven P M. The two adopted items. Thirty-six, twenty-five Glenbar Drive, applicant seeking a variance of eighteen inches to require thirty-six inch side yard to construct a four hundred eighty-four square foot garage, eighteen inches from the property line. Two zero eight, zero, zero Park Cliff Drive, applicant seeking a variance of two hundred fifty-six square feet to construct four hundred square feet shed in rear yard, one hundred forty-four square feet is permitted. The applicant is also seeking a variance of a three foot height to construct a thirteen foot, six inch high shed in rear yard and a ten foot by six foot is permitted. Mayor, thank you for the good news, reference to Stanford and Woodstock. As the word councilman and as Councilman Berger, who's a resident of Ward Two, we're ready to hit the street to get whatever is necessary so that we're victorious in our application. Thanks again, Mayor, that completes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Adler?
Thank you, Council President Kilbane. I'm just again, thank Mrs. Soto, as she had mentioned, you know, it was many of the people on our street that were, you know, complaining about the issue. But as Mayor Cooney mentioned, he nor any of us were aware of these issues. And people like Mrs. Soto, who are willing to take action, will help, first of all, to answer the cries of many of the residents as well as most hopefully come up with some solutions that will help remedy some of the concerns that you did have. So thank you, Mrs. Soto, for being a person of action. That's it, Council President Kilbane.
Thank you, Councilwoman Adler. Mr. and Mrs. Soto are always, always quick to speak out when they see issues, so we always appreciate that. Councilwoman Waring?
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I'd like to make a motion to remove ordinance nineteen fifty from consideration.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Your number, the clerk, please call the role in the motion to remove ordinance nineteen fifty for further consideration.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
There is the ordinance is removed. Anything else, Councilwoman Waring?
That concludes my report, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman King?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I, thank you, I got a couple of things tonight. First, there is a meet and greet tomorrow with the new superintendent at the Fairview High School Cafeteria Courtyard from six thirty to seven thirty. And then also coming up this weekend with the school system as well, they are having a Super Pops concert. That's gonna be outdoor, it starts at noon and goes all the way till I think five P M. or so with varying grades and performances and, and everything like that, so it should be a, a good event to be put on. And then as Councilor Minnick already previously has said, you know, with the sewer project potential, if there's anything that we could do in the neighborhood to help muster up support or any ideas that might strengthen the grant application. You know, we've already had discussions that we're, you know, we're gonna do anything we can to, to, to go after this. So if there is, please feel to, or please let us know and we can, can get on that. And then the last thing, I did have a rare opportunity to see those new Hustler mowers that, that came in before their first mow at Bolton Park. So they look like they're great pieces of equipment, so that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the chair is going to assign the topic, the topic of creating housing protections for victims of domestic violence and affected landlords to the local government and Community Services Committee. Okay, and I'd also love to say that I'm, I'm very excited to see this, this connection trail coming to fruition. Very exciting. Okay, hoping all the residents and all of you are staying safe and healthy and enjoying this warmer weather. So that's it and nothing else.
So moved.
Session.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Kilbane? Mike, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, okay. Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
There is, council is adjourned, good night, thank you, everybody, have a nice.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody, take care.